Folks, gather round for this very exciting occasion. So for those of you who don't know, my name is David Mitchell. I'm the mayor of the town of Bridgewater and I am super excited to be here. I know this has been a long time coming. We wanted to do this many years ago. There's some complications. You can all call the province, your MLA, and get them to update the traffic standards. That makes it so these aren't illegal. But, you know, between Steve and our staff, we found a solution on, you know, a very busy intersection, very highly prominent, which is what we want too. But I just want to convey that this is more than just, you know, painting some colors on the road. You all know that. It's the town's way of publicly demonstrating to everyone that this is a safe, respectful, inclusive community where everyone deserves to be treated with love. And I know for many of you, it doesn't feel like that. So I fielded a few calls. Why are you doing this? Why are you spending the money? Well, because some people don't have the luxury of just walking around being exactly who they want to be, a full, true expression of themselves without someone judging, hurting them. You don't have to go down all, you know. So this is just a small thing that the town can do to express that this is everyone's community, regardless of who you are, how you identify, whatever it is, this is your community. And so we are just, we are privileged to be able to do this. And so I do want to thank Lunberg Pride and our staff team for working together. And I look forward to the parade that's coming next month, our first Pride Parade. Town Council will be there with all of you. And so, you know, better things are ahead. Now I'll turn it over.
Geez, now I gotta try not to cry. Thank you. No, I mean, like you said, this is a, it's a small gesture in the grand scheme of things, but it really means a lot more than just paint on a road. I know people here are part of the LGBTQ+ community. They're allies here. And the climate that we're currently living in, where there is a lot of betrayal and attacks on LGBTQ folks, especially when people are trans, you know, when, especially when we have the events in Bridgewater next month, this will show to them that it's more than just paint. You know, this is a town that is welcome and inclusive to anyone, no matter the minority that comes out and tries to speak out against us because, you know, we're not going anywhere. And it truly means a lot to me that we've worked through all the ups and downs with the rules and found a way to make it work because it's so important that we have a crosswalk in Bridgewater, especially now that Bridgewater is growing and it's going to grow in the coming years. So I just want to thank everyone who came out. And this is wonderful that it happens to be in place before Pride Week next month. So I hope that anytime you're around here, whether it's during Pride Week or not, that you'll remember this very important day. And, you know, we will just keep, keep staying positive despite all the reasons we have not to be. So thanks, everybody.
I'm Amanda Fancy. I'm the dealer-owner of Gauze Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location. So, you know, we've, we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location. You know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits. But it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to, to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry in this because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some, you know, strong investment opportunities for sure.
Well, my name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera at the Montreal Orchestra of Music. So this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my, my family is still in Montreal. So I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister. So, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nine to Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The, the things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears. You don't put earbuds in and just walk around from one machine to the other. You, you focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home and there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
I'm Amanda Fancy. I'm the dealer-owner of Gauze Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location. So, you know, we've, we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location. You know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our, our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to, to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry in this because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some, you know, strong investment opportunities for sure.
Well, my name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera at the Montreal Orchestra of Music. So this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my, my family is still in Montreal. So I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister. So, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nine to Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The, the things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears. You don't put earbuds in and just walk around from one machine to the other. You, you focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home and there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
Folks, gather round for this very exciting occasion. So for those of you who don't know, my name is David Mitchell. I'm the mayor of the town of Bridgewater and I am super excited to be here. I know this has been a long time coming. We wanted to do this many years ago. There's some complications. You can all call the province, your MLA, and get them to update the traffic standards. That makes it so these aren't illegal. But, you know, between Steve and our staff, we found a solution on, you know, a very busy intersection, very highly prominent, which is what we want too. But I just want to convey that this is, this is more than just, you know, painting some colors on the, on the road. You all know that. It's, it's the town's way of publicly demonstrating to everyone that this is a safe, respectful, inclusive community where everyone deserves to be treated with love. And I know for many of you, it doesn't feel like that. So I fielded a few calls. Why are you doing this? Why are you spending the money? Well, because some people don't have the luxury of just walking around being exactly who they want to be, a full, true expression of themselves without someone judging, hurting them. You don't have to go down all, you, you know. So this is just a small thing that the town can do to express that this is everyone's community, regardless of who you are, how you identify, whatever it is, this is your community. And so we are just, we are.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I will welcome you to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council. Just a reminder, the town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaq, the unceded ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and we are privileged to be here. Agenda's been circulated. Are there any additions or deletions? None can have a motion to approve the agenda circulated. Council Conklin, Second of Y, Council Thorburn, all of those in favor? I suppose motion is carried. I'm going too fast for you. It's going to be a long meeting, so just bear with us. Announcements from members of council for anything upcoming or, oh, I knew there was something from the deputy mayor. Yes, thank you, your worship. I just wanted to remind residents, the upcoming parade is a little over a week away on Saturday, November 25th. So there's time still to get in your parade applications. You can go to our website, bridgewater.ca/parade, and complete the online application. So yeah, there's still time to get that in. Great. And decorations going up around town as always. Yes, they'll start this week, I believe, with the wreaths. Our community tree arrived at public works, so we have in the next week to schedule to get the lights on and it will be decorated in time for Christmas next, Christmas parade next week. So yeah. Excellent. Exciting. Other announcements? You know, thank you to all the folks that put on the Remembrance Day service in town. I know it takes a lot of effort, a lot of moving parts, volunteers at the Legion and other volunteers. The weather held off like just for the window of the, of the service. I know when we were on our march back, it started to rain for a few minutes. And as always, it was just, it's amazing to see in this community, the number of young people that come to these, sports teams, for age, and just, you know, young people with their families. And as someone who grew up in Ontario, where it was kind of business as usual, it's always quite something special to see that the town kind of stop and people go to the cenotaph. And of course, you may have seen my, my post yesterday about young Chloe who caught my eye doing sign language during the, during the National Anthem that, that just blew me away. And then I found out later today that the, the music teacher at Bayview, Mrs. Lake, teaches all her students how to sign O Canada, which I think, I hope someone has told Mrs. Lake how much they appreciate that because that, that to me is amazing. So of course, hearing Pierre Lenz rendition of Flanders Fields, you could just, you could hear people. I was certainly choking up just to hear that, that iconic voice of his. So that was very special. Anything else from council? Council Thorburn?
Just on the same topic, hopefully the people and the residents got downtown and seen some of the banners with the veterans there on King Street. A lot of work, but we have another date going up next year. And we did get the flyover. How it'd be a little bit late and what we would have liked to have it, it did fly over and you could almost reach it. So people like that too.
I was surprised with the low cloud cover that we even, we were even able to get that. So that was, that was great. And I should of course thank Patrick Hurdle, who livestreamed that for the community, lots and lots and lots of comments from people who were just, for whatever reason, are unable to make it. And, and having that component. And for the community that may not know, you know, Patrick livestreams pretty much everything that's livestreamed at the town. So it's not just, you know, a Monday or Tuesday at the council, but it is the parades and it is, you know, the Day of Truth and Reconciliation, all these events, the Remembrance Day, are livestreamed. So I don't even know if that's in his job description, but it's certainly something. I know he does it, I know he does it just because he loves doing it, but also it's such a valuable service for people in the community. And I know some of the comments are, were not even from people in this province. So that's the Remembrance Day ceremony or service they're watching and that's great. Thank you, Patrick. All right, we are down to delegations. And so we have a, we have a delegation from Mike Williams and Jim Auton and Shelley Withers for the Heritage Advisory Committee for Homestead Day. So I will invite you down to the podium.
Hi, how you doing? I'm going to pass out invitations. You probably see these around. Beautifully done by our Patrick. Another hat. Oh, yeah. He's just a man of lots of talents. And this is this Saturday at the Dead Brise. And it's everything you want to know about heritage properties, renovation versus restoration, how to do research on your properties, and basically get to know some of the people that are into this sort of thing. We have some feature presentators. We're going to have Peter Oikle to give us a bit of backup because he knows everything there is to know about heritage properties in Bridgewater. We have Emma Lang, who's from?
Heritage Trust, Nova Scotia.
Heritage Trust, Nova Scotia, and she's going to do a small presentation. Our own Michelle Conick, who's an employee of the, of the museum, is going to reveal her digital map of Bridgewater, which actually pinpoints all the historical relevance to the properties in Bridgewater. It is an ongoing project. It's fantastic. It's going to be built upon and over time, there's going to be lots tied to this digital map. So it's, we're really lucky to have this. We're going to have Nick come, Nick Brown's going to come and go through the nuts and bolts of, of the procedure for registering your home as a heritage, why you should do it, and also is there anything out there to help you do it? And our own Jim is going to talk about how to maintain your, your property and he's going to go over some of his experiences as, as, how he, how he came to make his house into a heritage property. It has a nice plaque on it. It's one to four. There will be coffee and perhaps a donut. So maybe two. And we'd really like you to come. And of course, we all recognize the value of heritage, value of heritage properties in the town. It does add value to the neighborhood. It's something that we should all promote for, I guess, personal, cultural, but also it's worth money too, you know, to the taxpayers. That a cultural, a house that is well-preserved and well-maintained is an asset to the neighborhood and, and it's a good thing for the tax base.
Civic pride.
Civic pride. Thank you very much for your time. Any questions?
Any questions from members of council? So again, that's, Homestead Day is Saturday, November 18th, from one to four at the Dead Brise Museum in Jubilee. And it's free. It's in the, in the community room. Okay. Perfect. And you might get up to two donuts. You said it, I'm just repeating it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I, I forgot to make two announcements, even though this giant piece of paper was right in front of me. So just November 13th to 19th is Transgender Awareness Week, recognizing the issues faced by individuals who are transgender and the allies that support them. So there'll be, there's a flag right now at the community flagpole at Shipper's Landing. And then next week is Restorative Justice Week, acknowledging the impacts and achievements of justice based on the restoration of human connections so that next week, there will be a flag representing restorative justice next week, again, at the community flagpole at Shipper's Landing. So I'll now open up the floor to other delegations that are here. I see, I see Dave at the back there. Did you, did you want to present anything to council? Yep. Do you want to come down? So you have, you have a couple of minutes to?
You bet.
To, I'm assuming, talk about the dog park.
Yes, I am here representing dog owners in Bridgewater that utilize the dog park. One of the problems we have right now is light. Like I said, if I were to work seven to four, I can't exercise my dogs. I have two border collies. In the summer, I take them out three times a day for an hour to keep them great at home. So one of the things we were, we've been speaking, I've been speaking with a lot of different people at the park and we have actually been able to secure a grant for $2,000 to buy, purchase solar lights, which we could then put up in the park, which would be solar-powered, motion-detected, and on a timer. So that at one point, you know, we could set it for eight o'clock, they're done, whatever time felt, you know, was reasonable. Because like I said, right, you know, in the summer, we can go right till 10 or 11 o'clock in the park. And we find one of the issues is there's a lot of people who are like, as soon as you mention, oh my God, that'd be so amazing. Because one of the things people may be doing now is seeking other places to exercise their dogs instead of the place where they should be, which is the dog park. You know, like they may go to school where there may be some light or, because they need to run them, like, like I said, I got two border collies and, oh, my cats go crazy. They just, they just, and like I said, dogs, you know, like I said, when dogs don't get exercise, they don't get that, that, that fresh air, they get destructive, they get bored, they get, so it's very stressful for people to also, you know, we already get enough stress in our lives. So what we're doing is like I said, we would, we would provide the funding. We are just hoping the town would, would allow us to have them put up. Like I said, we don't need any poles, right? Because they can just be put up on trees. You know, they're, we're using for like three to four months out of the year and they can be turned off. And yeah, so we are hoping to get your approval.
So I know staff have, have had some conversations about this.
Yeah, so because it is a public park, I guess there's a few things. One, the service level for the park is, it opens at dawn, it closes at dusk. Certainly council can say, we want to extend the hours of the park and set a time, whether it's nine or 10. There's a neighborhood that, you know, council may want to give some consideration to in terms of, well, the, how's the lighting going to be directed? What's the lumens? There's some things that staff have to look at in terms of, does it illuminate sufficiently enough for our insurer not to have any concerns with, with the park being open in the night, right? So there's standards that we would have to ensure were met. The first question would be is if it's something that council wants us to investigate in terms of extending the hours, that the dog park is open so that it's open beyond dusk, then that's something that we can certainly do. Our bylaw doesn't list it as something that closes at dusk, but rather says it's, they, all parks close at dusk unless otherwise signed. So we can sign this park so that it's open longer, but that's really a service level discussion. Then staff would have to take some time and determine how, what type of lighting would be best, understanding it's, it's actually funds as opposed to here's the lights, which makes that conversation a little easier because we'd want to make sure that the lights met a certain standard in terms of illumination and that type of thing, and placement and all that stuff. In terms of when, staff are pretty backed up right now, particularly in the department that would be doing this. So I think the first step would be to do a little bit of investigation and bring that back to council and say, here's, here's what would have to happen in order for us to extend the hours of that park. And then look at how we can build that into our work plan.
Because not unusual, like we have parks with lights, right? So skate park is open later because it has lights. And it's weird because it's not, it's not really open later. It's open, like it's, it's open till like 10 o'clock in the summer because the light doesn't fade. So we're not, we're not asking to be?
No, just we specifically sign this one.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So it's signage and so.
Yeah.
So, so again, I recognize that we don't make, we don't make decisions the day that we get a presentation, but you know, I leave it to council's discretion to, whether they want direct staff to continue some investigation on, on this. Council Calloway?
Yes, I'd be happy to ask staff to continue investigating this and bring it back to council.
Okay. Do I have a second there for that? Council Conklin? Any, any further discussion or any questions of Dave? Council Thorburn?
Yeah, I think it's important, the study's done, you define the location because you may need more than two or three to make sure that it satisfies everybody's needs and wants. So I think that's important.
And I would emphasize that, just given our workload, it's not something that I, I think would come back in the next month. It might be in the new year that we're coming back to council to say, here's, here's how we can make that happen. Because we, we have to have those conversations with our insurer and look at park standards and that type of things for lighting. Because that is a good point, that would be the primary concern there is where and what.
Council Calloway?
I should also add, we may want to look at, would we need to look at some lighting along the path leading into?
Yeah, we would have to look at the whole setup and setting of the park and, and determine what would have to be illuminated in order to make it safe for people to use. And as I said, you may want to determine, consider the impact on the neighboring properties as well, and, or at least make sure that the lighting's angled so it's not shining in someone's backyard or that type of thing. Because there are houses that kind of go along two sides of that park.
So I recognize when you, when you light it, you have to light it correctly enough so it's not, becomes, like if it's too dim, then it becomes inviting for people, but then it becomes a hazard. So we have to make sure we do it right. Council Conklin?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, like, would there be enough sunlight to generate energy?
Oh yeah, like they have ones, you don't even need to have sunlight, as long as?
Just daylight.
Yeah, just the daylight and that, that'll, and again, we're knocking it, we're not looking at having it to last all night. It only needs to last for a few hours. So even if they don't charge fully, they should still last enough to get till eight or whatever time is determined that it could still open till.
Great idea.
Council Tanner?
Good on you for securing funding and then bringing this to council to ask for permission to have these installed. I think that's brilliant and well done.
Well, it was, it was a couple of years ago, someone put one up and then someone took it down. We figured the town, because it was unauthorized, right? And that got us thinking and, and just, you know, you start hearing and, and actually it was Sean from Subaru that was able to get the funding for, for that from Subaru Canada. And even when we brought that, people were willing to start donating and doing whatever to get some lights because, like I said, it is a very big issue for a lot of residents that, you know, like I said, what do they do with their dog? Because a walk will not satisfy a lot of dogs.
Yeah, it's a well-used, well-used community asset for sure. So we have a mover and a secondary. And just, I know that's seconder. And just, I know that some people are like, why does it have to take a little time to come back to council? So, and you said, so the department that does all this is engineering, and engineering is working on massive infrastructure projects right now. So, I mean, we'd all like everything done yesterday, but I, I also know you appreciate that the, the same team that has to work through this process is, is dealing with housing, affordable housing, pipes in the ground. So I know they'll, they'll get to it as quickly as they can, but.
Just ask one of the dog owners. If one of you owns a dog on engineering.
We have a mover and a seconder. You ready for the question? Question being called all is in favor. All opposed, motion is carried.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to come before council? No? Okay, we have the minutes for October 23rd regular council meeting. Any errors or omissions there? Hearing none, motion to approve the minutes. Thank you, Counselor Tanner. Seconded by Counselor Caldwell. All those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. And we are down to correspondence for action. Letter to the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities regarding the urgent need for advocacy to improve rural cellphone coverage for emergency preparedness. Duh. Yeah, so I know that, that provincial government has, has announced 43 million, something like $40 million cell phone coverage. I think everyone in this room and everyone who's probably, thousands of people who are watching us right now know that as soon as you leave Bridgewater and you're two minutes outside of town, your cell, cell signal drops, whether you're in day spring or along the 103. And the number of accidents on the 103 where someone has not been able to even dial the emergency services is, you know, it's unacceptable. So here it is, a request for a letter to the NSFM for, for some advocacy on this. What is the wish of council? Counselor Tanner?
I move the town council of the town of Bridgewater direct that a letter be sent to the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities in support of the need to improve rural cellphone coverage for emergency preparedness.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. We're down to reports and recommendations, and we have a delegation online. So we have Christine McClair, who's the regional coordinator for Region Six Solid Waste Management, who's going to talk to us about extended producer responsibility, or EPR. Welcome, Christine.
Thank you for having me in to present to council. Can everyone hear me fine?
Yep, you're good to go.
Okay, good, good. So when I was asked to present, I was very happy to do so. I understand that between the time that I was requested, that a staff report has been prepared by Director Walsh, who is also on the call. So I'll try not to stop too heavily on his report, but I will certainly refer to it. So extended producer responsibility. I'll just start sharing my screen here. This presentation has come through from Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities. Many of you may already be familiar with it. So I will just touch on some of the slides in this presentation and, and then open up for questions. So EPR for PPP regulations implications for municipalities. It's a mouthful. It's something that we've been waiting on for a very long time. So I'll just move right in here. EPR for packaging, paper products, and packaging-like products. It regulates the industry responsibility for both the operations and the financial management of certain recyclable materials. And the majority of that would already be collected in your recyclable streams at curbside. So the idea of making the producer responsible, ideally it incentivizes industry to create easily recyclable packaging because the producers become responsible, excuse me, become responsible for the cost, as opposed to council having to pay for products that are very elaborate that become garbage items and, and can't be recycled. So as I said, this has been coming for, for years. There's been a lot of effort behind this. A proposal was put in in 2019, and then it was finally, the regulations were announced August 2nd of 2023. So the savings from this new arrangement, it is estimated provincially to be between 20 and 25 million annually for municipalities. So the gist being that the producers are going to be paying for the collection, processing, education, every aspect of these recyclable products, as opposed to that cost falling to council as they have been carrying that burden for a very long time. So lots of consultation, collaboration. We've finally gotten to everybody in consensus to this point. So who are the players? We have the producers, obviously the people who are making this packaging. Producer Responsibility Organization, essentially that's an organization that gets appointed by companies like General Mills and 3M. So they're not dealing with us directly, but they appoint a responsibility organization to act on their behalf. The provincial government obligates producers and sets the targets. We also have a, an administrator, Devotee Nova Scotia. So, and they'll be managing registration and data collection, overseeing, and essentially keeping that producer responsibility organization on task. And then we have the municipalities and the regions. So those who are interested, registered with Devotee, and they can, or may be contracted by industry to continue with collection, processing, and/or education. So we'll get into that just a little bit more. Dates and deadlines. So August 1st, the regulations came into effect. January 1st, 2024 is the deadline for municipalities to express their interest in participating in this industry-led program. Also, January 1st, producers must select who their producer responsibility organization will be. Chances are, there will be one organization taken care of, but there is the possibility that there may be more than one. October 1st, 2024, the organization must consult with every municipality in the province. And to consult on the aspects of the program, to ensure the program is, is, will be designed to meet our needs and requirements. And then they will produce a readiness report for the province. And then jump ahead, December 1st, 2025, the full program comes into effect. Yeah. So readiness report, essentially they'll consult with us. We'll have chance for feedback, what they've heard before the readiness report goes to the province. Regulation overview, as everyone has had this, this presentation and may have already sat in on a webinar, I'll just kind of move through this under our slides here. So opting in or out. Municipalities can choose either way. If you opt out, you will continue to service the Blue Bay program at your cost. So if you opt in, you would cease to provide any services related to the Blue Bay program unless contracted by the producer responsibility organization to provide collection, processing, and/or education. So this is non-binding. Opting in at this point essentially means you would like to have a seat at the table and be open to discussions as to, to what the program will look like. Opportunity for feedback and the, the opportunity to strike a contract should the industry be interested in doing so. So I guess we've hit kind of the high points. Opting in, just like to make sure to point out, so the program is, is for residential materials. So while there are some, some places like apartment buildings, seniors, residences, schools, things of that nature that are, that will be included in the program, institutional, industrial, commercial is not covered in the program. So currently, you do provide that service to those sectors, and that would be a decision that you would have to make, whether you would like to continue that service. And if you continue that service, whether you're collecting or whether the producer responsibility group is collecting, either way, that would have to be something that, that you'll have to consider. Contact to be a service provider. If a municipality opts in, the organization may wish to engage the municipality as a service provider. So they don't have to. Once you, once you indicate that you are in, all responsibility falls to them. But I am sure that they will be interested in negotiating contracts, especially contracts that provide good value for the service. And it certainly seems like your existing contract does provide good value. Municipalities with existing recycling services will have to decide whether you would like to express interest to that group, perhaps to, to participate in the collection and processing end of things. So that may be another opportunity for you. Negotiations, well, contracts may be on a one-by-one basis between municipalities, or in, in cases as for you, the joint services board, if you choose to appoint them as your representative. So rather than one-on-one, there may be groups of municipalities that bind together to negotiate together. Or perhaps, as done in other jurisdictions, one kind of representative municipality goes through the process and then shares that information with all the other municipalities. Yeah. So delivery, the education services, next steps is, is probably the most important point here. So as you choose to opt in, registration with Devotee Nova Scotia needs to be completed by January 1st, 2024. And you'll be asked to provide some operational data relating to the service. That being the things like the number of households that you have, the type of materials, how frequently are you collecting? So just some, some real basic information, although getting accurate numbers will be critically important. So staff should be, and if I get the, if I'm understanding correctly, staff has already been working for you to try and extract that information from, from databases that you currently have. So let's kind of, if in a nutshell, you did receive a staff report, and I am just trying to stop sharing my presentation here. You did receive a staff report, and, and perhaps, maybe Gabe, would you like to, to join in here?
Yeah, thanks, Christine. I think you've covered all the high points of that very well. And the staff report kind of reflects a lot of the, the same information that, that Christine just relayed to you. Our special recommendation from the MJSB is that all our partnering municipalities opt in the EPR at this time. As, you know, there, that seems to be the, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of downside to it right now, but there's a whole lot of upside of having our voices heard with, as these regulations are, are molded over the, the course of the next nine or 10 months. So.
Yeah. So that's pretty much all. I, I feel we need to say to this point. I'm sure you must have some questions for us.
Questions from members of council. We've kind of talked about this for a few years. A number of us are members of the MJSB, and of course, Counselor Thorburn's on Region Six and, and has been keeping us up to date on, on how this has been going. Slow going, but it's coming. So I know we've probably had a lot of our questions answered already. I don't know if anyone else has questions about this. Counselor Thorburn?
Not so much a question, Christine, but this money's already been collected for years from the producers, but the province haven't had a chance to get any of it. So you're talking 20 to 25 million, which is a big change, which probably would pay for 50, 60% of the operating cost associated with our waste collection. So it's a win. So what we need now is everybody to sign up to just move to the next step so we can keep working on this. This has been a long road, and now we got all the municipalities on board, and we're all geared up to go, and the regional chairs are excited. And I think it's a win-win for everybody. So, and I don't think the residents will see any change in the way things are done. And I think that's important, that it's pretty much going to be done the same way. So that's just a couple of comments, Christine. Thank you. Well done.
Thank you, Counselor Thorburn.
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing those comments forward, Wayne. Yeah, the money has been, already been collected. 80% of the rest of the country, 80% of war already has extended producer responsibility. So these companies are, are already collecting, you know, whether it's one cent on a box of cereal, they don't know where that box of cereal will be sold. So they've already incorporated that into the pricing. So they're collecting that. We don't have any mechanism up until now in order to get that money, money back. And so we're, our residents are paying twice, when the, once when they buy the, the cereal, and then through the municipal taxes as well. So absolutely, it's a, it's a win-win. Everything that we put forward through, for this program design will be to, to keep it seamless to the resident. So they will continue to put their stuff out to the curbside and not be required to carry off whatever products unless absolutely necessary for, you know, they won't have to take things to the environmental depot or, or run here and there. They'll still have the same service that they've been accustomed to at the, at the curbside, and it literally should be seamless. So very much a good news story. And yeah, at this point, as I said, it's, it's non-binding. You get a seat at the table. So once you're, once you're at the table, you certainly will have the opportunity should, through this program design, if there's anything that, that becomes a, a critical point that you no longer want to participate, you will be entitled to back out. And backing out would mean that you would continue to pay all of the class. But at least by registering, by January 1st, you'll be in and able to participate and, and help form that program. So absolutely, a good news story.
That's great. C N L?
Yeah. So Christine, you may have just answered my question. It's probably more the detail that I'm looking for in the program design. But if municipalities are going to, assuming that municipalities end up being the, the entities that continue to collect and manage the material and get paid for that, it's more a question of how do they allocate that, that, that funding to municipalities? Is it based on actual volume, or is it based on an assumption? Because Walmart could sell to someone in the town of Bridgewater or the District of Chester. We don't know. So perhaps I might, I might have just drilled down into program design with that question?
Yeah, absolutely. But that question is coming up from everyone. So thank you for, for bringing it forward. At this point, we're, we're speculating that it will be a payment to you, if you're doing the collection. It will be a payment to you based on each household. So like a flat rate per household. And then chances are, they will be looking after all of the processing. But if you are transporting to their location on, on your cost, then you would issue them a, an invoice. And so, but these are a lot of details that we can't absolutely say until we start seeing the program design. But certainly, that's what everyone is looking for. How are we going to get compensated? And then tell us the details, and then tell us how much. So at this point, yeah, by registering, then we've got until October, and they will have to come to you to, to consult on, on the program design. So it doesn't go forward without the municipalities. So at this point, we can't really offer any more details.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? If not, some prepared to make a motion? Counselor Thorburn, thank you.
I would move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the recommendation of the municipal service board and approve opting in to the extended producer responsibilities EPR for packaging, paper products, and packaging-like products PPP, and to direct the municipal services. EPR for packaging paper products and packaging light products PPP, and to direct the municipal joint service board to work with the municipal staff to ensure the opt-in submission requirements have been met prior to January the 1st, 2024 deadline.
Great. Do I have a second here? Councilor Caldwell, further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you, Christine. Thank you, Gabe, for joining us. That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're down to 9.2, account write-offs.
The report that I've submitted just indicates that, I guess I'll back up for a second. So normally, we don't have a whole lot of accounts we have to write off with the town. Taxes, if people don't pay their tax bill, we go to collections and things, or tax sale, sorry. So there's just sometimes we have the odd little invoice that gives us a little bit of trouble for something that we can't attach to the property itself. So in this particular situation, the customer of this P E I insurance company had done damages to property in town. We had invoiced said insurance company who then ignored us for a period of time, until we sent it to collections, and then suddenly, they were a bit responsive. So the original bill was for just over $2,100, which included H S T. So they indicated that they don't pay H S T because it was actually on staff labor and our equipment used to do, it was to do cleanup after an accident. So they agreed to pay the labor and, like, our actual costs, but not the H S T on top of it, because they're just reimbursing. And they also disputed the interest because they were a long time dealing with us. So they did pay the principal balance of the actual costs that the town incurred to do the cleanup, so. And they've since paid that. So we're just, however, when we take a payment, it applies first to interest. So it actually is just the principal owing of $738.43. That includes interest and the H S T. On the H S T side, we'll recover that back from CRA because we already remitted it to them. But we did need council's permission to adjust that invoice. And like I said, we, we didn't have any at all in '22, '23, so it's just this one that we were unable. We go through a collection agency, once staff are done trying to collect, so for the most part, we have a very good collections process, and we write off very little, so. It's cleaning up our, our accounts, and I know it's not ideal, but we feel like we've exhausted everything with, through collections, through staff time.
Everyone has a look on their face like I feel, which is, that is the insurance company of Prince Edward Island, seems unwilling to pay. I don't understand, like, I'd be embarrassed if I were them personally, like, you're an insurance company, your whole job is making sure that you're paying things and.
But they often negotiate. The same thing happens, you know, on our end.
Yeah. Frustrating. What is the, I mean, I, I don't want to waste staff's time, which is our money, chasing down an insurance company that seems to.
They already forced us to lose a percentage to the collection company, who were the ones that ultimately collected the money from them. So they already cost us money just in the collections process outside of staff time.
Add this to the list of concerns from people after the flood and after the fires, who are struggling to deal with insurance companies who seem to be dragging their feet on various things. Just leave it at that. What is the will of Council? Council Conklin, yes?
I just have a question again. So the collection agency would have contacted the insurance company and sent them an invoice for an amount owing. And at that time, did it include the H S T?
Yes, it included the H S T and the interest, yeah. And then the insurance company would have contacted staff, got the same information they were provided with previously on the actual costs, and, you know, they dispute, and they said they're paying it in good faith to clear up the matter and whatnot. So there was, you know, been a correspondence back and forth, but ultimately, they were, that's the amount, the amount we were able to collect of the original $2,100 was $1,832.60.
Are you done, Councilor?
Sorry. So the collection agency was kind of, I guess, empowered to take a lesser amount, or?
No, that's just how much the insurance company chose to pay.
Okay.
So at this point, if we don't pass this motion, this recommendation, it just goes back to collections to try and collect.
And they'll not pay, and it'll accumulate interest, and we'll chase it for.
Isn't it out of staff's hand, though, and with the collection agency, or am I mistaken?
At some point, they give up, though, right?
Yeah.
They can't collect it, they can't collect it.
Yeah.
But it remains on the books until we do something about it.
Yes.
Or it will fail.
Oh, sorry, Councilor.
Is there not like a regulator or an ombudsman or someone that you can go to to notify them that they're not paying the claims?
It's more that they took their time to pay the claim, which is also not unusual for insurance, and our system automatically will add interest to that account. So I'm just bringing the matter to council. Council can decide if they would rather staff continue to try to collect it. You know, we certainly can. We just know the likelihood of getting any more funds might be low.
So can't we just leave it in the hands of the collection agency and not really take up any more resources?
We can, but if collections, you know, it's just going to sit on our books as receivable, and then, you know, it'll be included in our allowance for doubtful accounts, or already have allowed for it in our expenses. And then it's just going to sit there for staff to trip over, and, you know, maybe we'll collect something, but it's highly unlikely at this point that, you know, the matter was ongoing since 2021, April of 2021. So we're already two and a half years in.
And this, going down this rabbit, was it an accident, like a car accident?
We would have to ask engineering, but they're not here this evening, but I think so. There was, it might have been the pole on Dufferin, so the cleanup and debris, fix the lawn, fix the, whatever it was.
Not a hard thing to figure out the math and do the payout, and it shouldn't have dragged, they shouldn't have dragged their.
They don't like to pay for us to do the, you know, their original dispute, I think, was because we did the work with our own staff.
Oh, well, boo hoo.
They didn't like to be charged.
We have things we need to do so that streets can open and people can be safe, and we can't, we don't have the luxury of dragging our heels, like, to do work, like some have in making payments. It's frustrating. Councilor Thorburn?
Yeah, if we don't deal with this tonight, then the interest keeps adding. So, you know, we've tried, they've done the best they can, as far as I'm concerned. We may not like it, but the best solution is to make the motion and get it dealt with and move forward, because we've probably wasted more staff time already than what this dollar values are. And going back to the collection agency, they've already pretty much washed their hands of it. So it seems to me that the best thing to do is just get it off the books and move forward.
So what I would like to propose then is if that is the recommendation of council or the endorsement of councils to take this off the books, I will reach out to our municipal colleagues, because if this story repeats across multiple municipalities in this province, it would be interesting to contact. There would be an insurance ombudsman that would be taking care of things like this, failing that, M L As, MPs, people that, you know, because I know, I know people in this community that still have not received their insurance settlements from the floods. I know there are people in H R M who have still not received their insurance settlements from the fires. And this may seem trivial, you know, whatever, a few thousand dollars to replace a, a, but it's, it's the principle of it. And so someone has to hold people accountable, and $738.43 might not seem much, but the insurance company of P E I has picked the wrong, wrong group to fight with. So that's, I guess, what I would say to council is, regardless of what council wants to do tonight, I will be contacting our colleagues and seeing if, like I said, if this story repeats, then we can write a letter together and see if we can get some, maybe some policies or legislation in place that ideally would set time limits on when payments are made from insurance companies. Councilor Thorburn?
Yeah, would this be an, go to U N S M?
Yep.
We get all of this cards on the same page, and collectively, maybe we can get something done for the next person. I know of a person that they just gave her so much money, and that was it, and it was more money to do the work than what was, what they're giving her, but that was her, they just gave her so much money and washed their hands of it. Didn't seem right.
Wow. So we will put that to the N S F M, they'll be able to go through the Let's Serve or whatever and poll communities. It's a simple question, I think. Councilor Tan?
Would you like a motion?
Sure.
It's ironic that one of their directors is a former premier of P E I, but anyway, we'll leave it at that. I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the finance department and write off an account balance of $738.43 for the insurance company of P E I.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Thorburn. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. There's probably a bunch of people in town of Bridgewater looking at who their insurance provider is and maybe looking to make a change, that it costs them more than $738.43. Okay. Thank you. Next is designated, designated community fund project application for the Royal Canadian Legion.
All right. So the next report is regarding an application that we received to be added to the designated community project fund from the Royal Canadian Legion Branch 24, which is our local branch here in Bridgewater. And so as part of that, I guess, a couple of things came of that. So as far as the application goes, you know, for the most part, everything was in line with the policy and what we would normally do for organizations. The policy doesn't specify, but the application form specifies that it has to be a society registered in Nova Scotia. However, all of the Royal Canadian Legions were incorporated under federal statutes, not our provincial societies act. So while the policy doesn't specify that it has to be, or that, you know, that it has to be, the application form says it must. So it's a little bit of variance there. So what I'm just asking is if council considers this application, that they also consider making an exception to the requirement on the application form to be a Nova Scotia-registered society. The policy was brought into place before I arrived, but in talking with other members of staff who were here at the time, they really hadn't considered that there would be a lot of federally incorporated or national non-for-profits organizations or societies that wouldn't already be a registered charity or have their own charitable arm. In this case, it's my understanding, the Royal Canadian Legion has a, is registered as a charity, but only for their poppy fund, not the regular operations of the legion. So the legion is unable to provide donation receipts to any donors specifically outside of the poppy fund. And so that's why they've come to ask. In addition to that, they've indicated that they have some modernization to do for replacement heat pumps and their existing elevators. So there are two capital projects they're looking to do a significant amount of capital fundraising for, and being able to have the town issue donation receipts for those donations, and us to, I guess, retain those funds in the designated community project fund so that a grant can be issued to the legion once those funds are raised. And so that's the purpose of the application, but it was just complicated a little bit by the fact that the policy itself, when developed, wasn't anticipating that it wouldn't just be local not-for-profits, you know, smaller organizations that weren't actual registered charities. So I don't think it's outside of policy. And then in the future, we can look at whether, if we continue, like, to receive applications similar to this that are outside that application form, then we could consider amending it. But in this case, I would assume it's a one-time thing unless we continue to see. I mean, we've definitely seen in the past few years quite a few applications coming through. It is a popular program, so we could consider that in the future an amendment, but for now, I think just making the exception to the application requirements itself would be sufficient, and it'll last staff time to go back and amend that and not hold this process out.
Any questions about this? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I'll make a motion, your worship. I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater accept the designated community project fund application submitted by the Royal Canadian Legion Branch Number 24, Bridgewater, in accordance with Policy 97, Designated Community Project Fund Policy for the purpose of fundraising for the replacement of heat pumps and the modernization of their building's elevator, and that the Bridgewater, and that Bridgewater Town Council make an exception to the requirement on the application form for the applicant to be a federally incorporated entity rather than a registered society in Nova Scotia. And further, that Bridgewater Town Council approve the establishment of a restricted operating reserve, D C P F Legion, under Policies 21 and 107.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Conklin. Further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. 9.4, external audit services, R F P award.
All right. So per our purchasing policy, we are required to put audit services out to R F P every five years, so the five-year window was up for that. So we've outlined for you what the criteria were that were evaluated by three members of staff, which included the technical response as well as pricing responses. There were two submissions, one from Grant Thornton and one from B D O. So we provided the scoring for both of those. So the total score for Grant Thornton was 96.3, and the total score for B D O was 83.2. I've included also what the totals are for each of the five years under that contract, so the entire contract for the five years, which includes auditing the town, consolidated financial statements, the trust fund, the public service commission, and as well as the Smart Cities Challenge Project Fund for the next three years while that, I guess, up until the wind-up of that project, is also included here. So the total value net of H S T is $299,388. Also, on the last page of that report, I just wanted to provide council with a bit of information as well. So there's an annual fee increase of approximately 4% year-over-year when we look at the five years that they proposed. But what I also wanted to identify for you was that if you look at what we were paying in the fifth year of our last R F P, there's actually a 51% increase in the fee year-over-year going from the last year of the R F P to the first year of the next one. So it's, it's quite a significant increase. I think we talked about this a while back with council already, when the auditors were proposing to break the contract early, and we had discussions with them, and they did honor their fee for the fifth year. The reality is, it's market conditions and, you know, their, their costs and their staffing and various things that have escalated over the past five years. I was actually the person that did the R F P response five years ago from Grant Thornton, so, you know, from that time till now, I think we've all, as employers, the town itself, experienced some of those things. Justified or not, Grant Thornton was the lowest price still out of the two responses that we had. The next high, the next price was a fair bit higher. So it's the lower of the, of the two, but it's certainly quite an increase from what we had been paying.
Yeah. Not unexpected, though, like you said, after the last year of the last contract. Are there any questions on this? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor McDonald?
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and award R F P 2023-08, external audit services to Grant Thornton, as outlined in the town's R F P for external audit services and the response to that R F P for a five-year term ending on March 31st, 2028.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fugier. Any discussion? Question being called, all is in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. That was fun to watch, Councilor Conklin.
Sorry, in favor.
I don't know.
A bitch.
9.5, grants to organizations, the Fall Grant Award. Watanaka. Watanaka. You don't often come before council, so.
Oh, it's been a year.
People, people around the community, because we have so many people who watch, might wonder who you are, but for the thousand people that showed up for the Glow Walk, this is the person that made that happen, so there you go.
With your assistance and beautiful Bridgewater was a big success this year.
Yes, it was.
It was great to see, it was a little bit overwhelming, to be honest. So today, I'm here to present the request for decision for the Grants to Organizations, September 30th deadline. This is the first of two intakes for this fiscal year. We have one September 30th, one March 1st. The 2023-24 budget allocated $29,000 to the Grants to Organizations for this year. So we had 11 applications for this deadline, the total of $1,432.25. Big ask. I met with councillors Andrew Tanner and Mike Conklin to discuss the applications. The recommendation is to fund four applications for a total of $7,750, as outlined in the report. That would leave $21,925 remaining for the March 1st deadline. So, any questions?
Questions from members of council? Ingraham, councillor Caldwell?
Are we, are we working on updating our policy regarding operational grants?
I believe that's coming in November or December.
Yeah, I'm hoping not next council, the council after, to come back with that. So I think there was a discussion during budget time about adding more, a chunk of money to the budget for operational funding, so the idea is to have kind of a two-tiered system for those organizations that have repeatedly successfully had grants and reported and all those things, then they could kind of apply to this operational funding. And so I'll come back and kind of explain that. And also, the hope is to do a little workaround clarifying for folks where we had, you know, quite large asks. And so just having a little more information for applicants upfront around what the budget is, what, what people have been granted in the past, so that the applications can better reflect what we can actually support. Some of the applications, as you can see, were such large applications that the amount that we could give them would just be such a tiny drop in the bucket to their project that it's, you know, we need to have a little better communication around that.
Other questions?
Just another comment, really, you know, like you say, that there was a large ask in, in some of those applications, but also just in reviewing those, how many didn't provide the support of the financial reports that they were supposed to submit, so.
Yeah, so the hope is to have a bit more clarity around it all too, so that it just can be simple, here's what we need to see, because.
I guess most people that make application, would they just go online and submit it or versus making a contact here with staff, I guess, is.
Yeah, and actually, a lot of them come in less complete and then staff, we go back and forth to actually complete things. Some people don't complete all of those requirements.
Right.
And so, yeah, we're hoping that with more clarity upfront, that there'll be less time for staff investment.
Exactly, yeah. Win-win for everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do believe, like, on our webpage, we do have the requirements, like, everything that's required to be submitted. Now, it's just maybe.
Yeah, and I mean, as, as somebody who writes a lot of grants, it is like a big job to sort through all of the little pieces, right? And so, you know, not to say that our policy isn't, doesn't have it all in there, but how can we make it as kind of clear and user-friendly as possible?
Right, yep.
Other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Councillor Colquhoun?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Grants to Organizations Committee and award grants for the September 30th, 2023 intake period as follows. Flourish 55+ Health Activity Society, $3,500. HB Studio, $1,000. LC Judo Club, $575. South Shore Multicultural Association, $2,000.
Seconded, Deputy Mayor Fugier. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you.
Thanks so much, and I'll see you guys.
9.6, Drop-In Center Operational Grant, under Policy 77, Funds to Support People Experiencing Homelessness. Megan, welcome back.
Thank you, happy to be here. And I'm also joined tonight by Cherry Lacston, who's the Chief Operating Officer at Souls Harbor, if there are any questions from council for Souls Harbor as well. So I am coming back in response to the funds that were previously allocated for the Tiny Shelter Grant, which council voted to remove from our policy. And. Oh, thank you. So a little bit of background on this, last month, SODA found that there was at least 117 households experiencing homelessness, so this number continues to fluctuate month-to-month, but it's been consistently over 100 households and growing. So we know that homelessness is a growing challenge in our community. And related to this, the province of Nova Scotia recently announced that they are opening a overnight shelter here in Bridgewater. So SODA will be operating the overnight shelter. It's going to be located at St. Paul's Lutheran Church, just down the block from us here at Town Hall. And that will operate from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, so it's only open in the nighttime, starting tomorrow, and operating until April 15th. And we've noticed with that, that there's this gap created during the daytime. So going back to October 10th, council voted to remove the Tiny Shelter Grant from the Grants to Organizations Policy 77 and directed staff to work with community organizations to come up with a recommendation to council for how we could better reallocate the funds, which were in the amount of $15,000 that were set aside for that. So staff hosted an engagement session on October 31st with Souls Harbor, SODA, and the United Way, and we came together to gather their input on what they think is most needed for people experiencing homelessness here in Bridgewater. So during that session, there was an obvious idea that rose to the top, that everyone was in support of, and that was a daytime drop-in center to complement the overnight shelter. And in our discussions, it was determined that Souls Harbor would be the best placed organization to operate a daytime drop-in center. They already have a drop-in lunch program running from Monday to Friday, so if they were to take this on, they would be just expanding their hours to 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And the opportunity, if the town were to support Souls Harbor, would be also that they could leverage additional funding from other sources and donations. So the recommendation from staff is to provide an operational grant in the amount of $15,000 to Souls Harbor to operate the drop-in center from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week between November 15th and April 15th. So this would cover the same time period as the winter shelter that's happening overnight and could be run as a sort of pilot project and assessed at the end, at the end of the period in April. And I'll pass it over to you if you have any questions.
Any questions from members of council? Councillor Caldwell?
Great idea. I'm wondering if, will families and youth be welcome at Souls Harbor during the daytime? Does anyone know if a solution's been found for families and youth seeking shelter at night in town?
So right now, just based on the current clients that go to Souls Harbor, there's no restriction on, like, there's family and youth that are, that are there.
Typically during our drop-in hours, yes, absolutely. My understanding from, I think it was the United Way, actually, was the discussion I had, that they were asking us to do this 12-hour period, and outside of our regular 12 to three operating hours, that these extra hours would be basically for the persons who do use the shelter overnight or who actually sleep outside. I don't know how we would determine that or how we would come up with some sort of system for us to identify those people, because the reality is, if not, if we're just extending hours from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, we're going to have 90, like, we, we serve about 90 meals every day now, so the reality is we can't handle eighty to ninety people 12 hours a day. So like you said, our understanding was that we would, during those extended hours, be servicing the persons who are accessing the overnight shelters or are actually sleeping in their vehicles or outside.
Okay, so, no, I, I'm, that's a great, great question then, because the province had indicated that there's another stream for those folks, but.
Yeah.
I guess the question's where.
Yeah, so they, it would be kind of, and probably it would be more of a.
DCS.
DCS answer as opposed to a town, town answer, but they're not part of the shelter that's being proposed. It's a, a low-barrier shelter for those, I think it's nineteen, eighteen?
Yeah, nineteen plus for the ages, so it's, the overnight shelter is not for families.
Yeah.
So we can't really answer your question, but we should have an answer to your question, so.
I know it's not our responsibility, our jurisdiction, but it'd be nice to know that there was an option or if somebody asked, we could point them in the right direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, so certainly we can reach out to SODA as well and, and because they, they, this would have been something that, you know, they've been dealing with all along is what solutions are out there for, for individuals, but there's not a shelter, per se, like, you see what's being proposed here. And the drop-in center, extended hours, is meant to accommodate those that would be leaving the shelter during the day with nowhere to go.
So all that to say, we will reach out to both SODA and Department of Community Services and try to get an answer, and when we have an answer for that, we will try to communicate that to the, to the broader public and share that. Councillor McDonald?
If that is the case, and we've now, we now kind of have two groups that are requiring support during the day, does it, does it make sense that that $15,000 pot of money that we have may need to be split in two directions, because there are going to be families that need support during the day as well as the individuals using this shelter during the day? If we spend the full pot of money, it's gone.
I think we'd have to go back and investigate how, how that, what, what options would be available to address, as you say, it's about 90 people in the run of a day, right? So the capacity and ability to do that would be something that, I don't think we've had that conversation, figure out if there is an organization that would be able to accommodate that and how would this funding be able to assist in doing that.
I think the other, the other answer I would have as well is, there are four other municipalities in Lynwood County that I'm sure, I mean, we did see MODL step up with the, when it was the Tiny Shelter Grant, very quickly, and, and we did not ask them to, they, they were very proactive in that, so, you know, credit where credit is due. I, I would think that they would, if, if required, if there was another pot of money that was needed and needed quickly, I think between the other remaining municipalities in this region, they would step up.
We are then relying completely on them before we've reached out to, you know, a Family Resource Center or somewhere and said, is there a need?
Well, I think SODA has identified the need and through this determined that the low barrier 19-plus was the biggest, the biggest need, yeah.
Or DCS has, yeah.
Yeah, so there are other organizations like the Family Resource Center who I haven't spoke to, but I felt that United Way, Souls Harbor, and SODA would have a fairly good idea of what those needs were and have a touch points with a lot of those same people who are maybe using the resource center, because they do have families coming into their, their coordinated access system as well.
Other questions?
Well, before we put a motion on the floor, I just want to commend Souls Harbor for stepping up. As you said, there's a gap here, so it's, the overnight shelter is needed, there's, I don't think there's anyone going to be disputing that around the community. But an overnight shelter needs a daytime place for folks to go, and so I appreciate Souls Harbor stepping up. I would just say, as a neighbor to Souls Harbor, I know that there are, you know, some people can get that not-in-my-backyard kind of feeling, so behind my house, I have the two tiny shelters at the Catholic church, and around the corner from me, I have Souls Harbor. And as a neighbor, I have never experienced any issues with folks. So I, I want this shelter and the Souls Harbor daytime drop-in to, to start off in the community's mind on the right foot. And so as someone who, as I said, is a neighbor to both of these, and not having experienced any negative impacts on anything from my property value to my enjoyment of my community or the safety of my family, I hope that people will see this as something that's needed and a good thing to have as opposed to starting from perhaps a more negative position. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there as someone who, yeah, past Souls Harbor, every day I'm away home for lunch, so I just wanted to, to put that out there.
Is someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Yes, your worship. I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the recommendation of the Community Development Department and approve an operational grant per Policy 77 in the amount of $15,000 to Souls Harbor Rescue Mission to operate a daytime drop-in center for the hours of 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week, from November 15, 2023 to April 15, 2024.
Yeah, it's seconded by councillor McDonald. Just before I forget, so this, you talked about this will help leverage other funding from other, other organizations, and I did talk about other municipalities, have they been approached as well? Like, this is a regional, you know, it's not just a drop-in for people who happen to live in the town of Bridgewater, right? It's regional, so I'm just wondering if they, if they haven't been approached for funding, if they've at least been advised that this is taking place, so they understand that?
Yeah, so I've been in communication with Alex, the Deputy CAO at MODL, back to the, when we first were taking the Tiny Shelter Grant out of our policy, and then also letting them know that this was coming to council tonight, so they're aware that this is happening. And I think they're generally supportive, but no official kind of dollar value has been kind of brought forward at this point.
Okay, perfect, as long as they're aware that we, again, because they, they had very quickly responded with some funding before, and so at least they're in the loop.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a mover and a seconded, any further discussion? Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
9.7, we have a land purchase on Hollingsworth and Roundhouse. Councillor Caldwell?
I'd love to recuse myself because I have a family member involved in this matter.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so I'll turn it over to the CAO.
So this is an application to purchase property on the corner of Hollingsworth and Roundhouse Drive, PID 60663424. The property is 10,764 square feet, and it's zoned R3, so comprehensive residential. The proposed use is to build a single-unit dwelling on, on the parcel, and the property is presently serviced with sewer and water laterals off Roundhouse Drive. So council has a policy, Policy 91, that sets out your, your frontage fee as a way, as a, one method of determining lot value. So you have a fee of $2,450 per lineal meter of frontage, so the lot in question is 40.12 meters, and that would equate to $98,000 for that lot. That value was established in 2018. Council's also, and the policy states that you may base price on a recent appraisal, property appraisal. So in 2023, staff had a property appraisal completed for lands in the Glen Allen subdivision area and specifically asked for a price per square foot for residential lot. And that came back at, and that was completed by Altus Group, and that came back at $655 a square foot, and the price that's being offered of $70,504 reflects the exact market value as established by an appraisal. So the policy enables the price to be adjusted or varied to reflect market value. Our staff opinion that the offered price meets the test of market value, because it is reflective of a recent appraisal, and it is consistent with recent sales in the area. The conditions of purchase, there's a 10%, deposit within 48 hours, closing would be February 29th, 2024. There's standard conditions that need to be satisfied by December 16th, 2023, so those would be zoning, so that the lot, yard setbacks, all those requirements are satisfied. satisfactory for the building that wants to be placed on the lot. Services are adequate title, the standard stuff that you would see in an agreement of purchase and sale, and that there's a buyback agreement that is executed, that would state that construction commences within 12 months of closing and is complete within 24 months of closing. So those conditions have been agreed to, subject to execution of the agreement by the purchaser. And if council's in agreement to sell the land, the next step would be to authorize the execution of an agreement of purchase and sale for the purchase price, as noted of $70,504, with the conditions as noted, including the buyback agreement.
All right, thank you. Questions from members of council? We have already reviewed this. Someone make a motion? Council Tanner?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater direct the chief administrative officer to prepare and execute an agreement of purchase and sale for the sale of PID 60663424 to Tyler Colwell, 15171083 Canada Inc., with the terms of the agreement to be generally, as noted in staff's report, including the purchase price of $70,504.
Thank you. Seconded by Council McDonald for the discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. And we will welcome back Council Caldwell. Next item on the agenda is the discussion session notes for October 16th. Our topic at that meeting was the strategic plan for the Bridgewater Fire Department. And again, just a reminder for the public, all the notes, all the documents that council has before them tonight are available online on the website. There's nothing added here that the public doesn't have access to, so you can go online and find those there, including the discussion session information as well. So that's something that I'll be coming back to council as well. But it was a great, it was actually a really good discussion. Should mention, Council Thorburn, we forgot to mention that, you know, there were some, quite some amazing long-service awards at the fire department banquet, including Reed Wynott's 50 years of service to this community. We had, do we have more than one at 35 years?
I think the only one at 35 was DC1 Andy Wenzel.
Yeah.
Went to the junior program.
That's right. Must have been in the junior, junior program. A toddler firefighter. You know, like, quite a few very long careers, you can call it that, voluntarily giving up your time for the community like that, so it's quite something. It was quite a great banquet and a great turnout. And of course, thanking our firefighters requires thanking the families of the firefighters who have to watch them go to a call that, you know, it's not, it's never a happy call for them, so it's, you know, there's risk involved and stress on the family members. So of course, we extend our thanks to the loved ones of all those who are on our Bridgewater Fire Service. 9.9 is South Shore Regional Library Board, so our lease at the library.
Okay, so just to kind of set the context for this, because some may wonder why it is that the town pays the rental cost for the library branch itself. There was a Libraries Act that was established some time ago and continues today, and that sets out that municipal units can establish a regional library board, and in fact, the municipal units in Lunenburg County started that on June 1st of 1972, with the various partners joining in subsequent years, with the last one being Queens County in 1981. And this kind of creates the board. So we have the headquarters, and that's jointly funded by all the municipal units that are part of that agreement. Then the act states that a municipal unit that is provided with library services by the regional library via a branch library shall incur the maintenance cost in providing the space and the utility and other related expenditures for the branch. So the town is a member of the South Shore Regional Library Board, and the town is the host of the branch library. So for that reason, the town is responsible for the maintenance costs and the space and utility and other related expenses associated with the actual facility that the branch is located in. And in 2010, we entered into a memorandum with the Town of Bridgewater and MODL entered into a memorandum that basically just re, I guess, restated that, that the town was responsible for operational costs related to the branch library only. So that would include cleaning, maintenance, utilities, and then again, there's the rent. So the town entered into a lease agreement for the branch library when the LCLC was just first coming onstream, I guess, open as a facility. So that was started December 1st, 2013, and it expires 10 years later on November 30th, 2023. So a new lease is required, assuming the branch is going to remain there, and that's certainly all indications are that it is. So it continues to operate as the LCLC, with the headquarters being there as well. So a new lease agreement was proposed. It was reviewed by the board, and it's being presented to the town as well as the South Shore Regional Library Board. Essentially, the lease stays pretty much the same as it was in 2013, with some changes to the rent. So with the rent, the branch, the branch space is 5,891 square feet. The lease agreement sets out a basic rent, so the headquarters pays a basic rent, and then they pay an additional rent. The branch pays zero for the basic rent and pays the additional rent. So under the existing lease agreement, which expires in a couple weeks, the square-footage cost is $9.58 per square foot for 2023. And the lease agreement stated that it would be adjusted every year by CPI, and it's to be reconciled by actual if actual is less. And that was put in place, the reconciliation, simply because it was a new facility, it was uncertain what some of the costs are going to be, but they've got a pretty good handle on that now. So the proposed lease is, as I say, the same, zero for basic rent, square footage remains the same, but the additional rate, additional rent rate decreases to $9.18 a square foot, and it's proposed to be adjusted annually by 3%, so a fixed percentage as opposed to CPI, which over the last four years would have been good. And so, again, when you, when you set a rate as opposed to just following CPI, there's always going to be ups and downs with that, but overall, 3% should be a fairly decent percent for the town in terms of the adjustment in square-footage rate on an annual basis. Everything else remains the same. The term is 10 years. And I also provided a table that kind of shows you what the annual rate is. So with the new rate, the 2024, it would be $54,079, and at the end of the lease in 2033, it would be $70,515. So what we're looking for is council's authorization to execute the lease agreement for the branch library if council agrees to the terms as presented.
Any questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Council Caldwell, thank you.
I move the Town Council approve the lease agreement between the Lunenburg County Multipurpose Center Corporation, the Town of Bridgewater, and the South Shore Regional Library Board for the leasing of space for the branch library space as presented, and hereby authorize the execution of the same by the mayor and town clerk.
Seconded by Council Conklin for the discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. We have Energize Bridgewater appointments to the advisory board. So we just have, we don't have a presentation on that, right? We just have, so we have appointed Karen Hall as a resident representative, Souls Harbor as a stakeholder representative, both great choices, and then reappointing Nova Scotia Power and Nova Scotia Health Authority, both as stakeholder representatives, to the Energize Bridgewater Committee, each for a three-year term. Is someone prepared to make a motion, which is a two reading what I just read? Council McDonald?
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater appoint Karen Hall as a resident representative, Souls Harbor as a stakeholder representative, and reappoint Nova Scotia Power and Nova Scotia Health Authority, both stakeholder representatives, to the Energize Bridgewater Advisory Committee, each for a three-year term effective immediately to November 14th, 2026, per the committee's terms of reference.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Tanner for the discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Okay, curbside waste collection contract. It's like a little maniacal laugh over there, I know.
Kim set the tone with the RFP for audit services.
Yeah, that's right.
I would suggest that this is another example of cost escalating over the past few years. So in 2020, the town entered into a waste collection contract with GE's all trucking limit. We went out for a regional call on all the municipalities in Lunenburg County, but each individual municipal unit entered into a separate waste collection contract. That contract expires March 31st, 2024. There is an option to renew for an additional two years, and the contract set out the price, 2.25%, but both parties had to agree to that, to that renewal period and the other terms as well. So discussions with GE's has indicated that there's been rising costs, and certainly more than 2.5% a year, and that's fuel, labor, everything that goes into operating their business, and they indicated that they would not be able to continue at that 2.25%, so they wouldn't be interested in renewing. So our option would be to go back out to market, which typically, certainly our past experience, has been one submission has been received for that. So when you go to market, you'd be locking yourself in for another four years, probably, because they'd have to ensure the equipment was in place for that four-year contract. So they've indicated, as I said, like, just wages alone have gone up over 20%, so the 2.5 is not sustainable for them. So they are proposing an increase of 18.23% in year one and 8.12% in year two, and this would apply equally to all items that are in the schedule that the town gets serviced for, and I believe those costs are noted there, what our extra costs would be for the town to do this. Next year would be an extra $60,000 with 18.23% added on that. So that's the increase. And as I say, it's, this isn't, as we saw tonight, the only service contract that we're experiencing some increases in the cost to provide services. The recommendation is that council authorize the renewal under the terms proposed by GE's for our waste collection contract for a period of two years.
We're going to see this with any long- or medium-term contracts we have that are coming due now, just like people are facing that with their mortgages that are coming due now, right? So it was, it's great until you got to renew, but as you said, this is an extension, and in two years, we're going to go out to market and see what happens. Questions of the CAO on this hearing?
There's one thing I would point out, and that is that we will be coming back to council probably in February or thereabouts to talk about service levels for our waste collection contract, because it will take a couple years for any waste collection provider to get the equipment, the trucks, and that in place to service the contract.
So any changes we want, free cart system, whatever it is that we think that is the direction we need to go. Obviously, it works with our partners as well, but yeah, we'll come back to that. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Council Thorburn, thank you.
I would move that Town Council extend the curbside waste collection services agreement with GE Environmental for a period of two years, commencing April 1, 2024, ending March 31st, 2026, as provided for in clause 1.1.2 of the curbside waste collection service agreement, with revision to clause 5.5 to set the rate increases at 18.23% for April 1, 2024, to March 31st, 2025, and to 8.12% from April 1, 2025, to March 31st, 2026.
Great, thank you. Seconded by Council Conklin for the discussion. Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. 9.12, we have the building permit report for October. Again, we just continue to be busy, maybe not quite as busy as last year, but still, if you look at our year-over-year-over-year for the last decade, it is crazy. So that is in your package for prusal. Next item is the December 2023 and January 2024 council meeting schedule. So as you know, there's, holidays are in there, and so council doesn't meet on our regular days. We have some changes there in the schedule, and so we have to ratify those changes at council. So someone prepared to make a motion for that? Council Caldwell?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater set the December 2023 and January 2024 meeting schedule as follows. Discussion session on December 4th, council meeting December 11th, discussion session January 8th, and council meetings on January 15th and 29th.
Perfect, thank you. Seconded by Council Tanner. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. 9.14, we have Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program Monthly Report for October 2023, and again, there's, they're busy, lots going on with them, and that's a group that serves anyone in the community over the age of 55, so you can reach out to them, and it's supported by multiple organizations and municipalities. Our last item before we go in camera is a request from the Bridgewater Baptist Church for a letter of support for their application to the Sustainable Community Challenge Fund for solar panels. So this is a new fund set up by the province last year, two years, not two years ago.
I think it was last year.
Last year.
Yeah.
And so it's open for everyone, really, to apply for sustainable initiatives, and so I believe they received a letter of support from Municipal District Lunenburg, and so they're looking for a letter of support from the Town of Bridgewater for their application. Anyone's prepared to make a motion? Council McDonald?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater provide a letter of support as requested in document number 23-180 to accompany the Bridgewater Baptist Church's grant application under the Sustainable Community Challenge Fund.
Thank you. Seconded by, a few people, Council Conklin. And just for clarification, this is a grant application, again, to the province, this is not a grant application to the Town of Bridgewater, so. Okay, we have a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. We've reached the end of our agenda. We have an in-camera meeting, a brief in-camera meeting following this for Section 222-F on the MGA for litigation. I thought we were going to have a quick discussion with contract negotiation with the province, but we can.
We can, if you want to have it.
Yeah, so. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Deputy Mayor Fager, Council Tanner, adjourn. Thank you.